Pretty good to know.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patsy Brescher, Chairman of the Norwalk Charter Revision Commission. And we are calling, I am calling the meeting of August 3rd. And we'll take the roll call, starting Rick McQuaid. Juanita Watford Riley.
President.
Angela Wasuna. Michael Witherspoon.
Here.
Tyler Fairburn.
I'm here.
Carl Dickens.
Here.
And myself, Patsy Brescher. So we do have a quorum. So the next item on the agenda is, and of course, we have our counsel attorney Steve Madnick with us also. Approval of the July 19, 2023 minutes is the next item on the agenda. You have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Michael moves the minutes second.
Second it.
Okay, Juanita seconds it. Are there any comments or corrections? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion to approve the minutes has passed. Is there any public comment this evening? Is anyone on Zoom wishing to address the commission this evening?
Not seeing any.
Who attended?
Yeah.
Are there any attendees? Are there any attendees at all?
I'm not seeing any.
I don't see any.
I don't see any.
Okay. Okay, so we now then go to review of the council, review of the common council's recommendations. And Mr. Madnick, can you please lead us through that process?
Happy to do so. Do you want me to put the charter on the screen?
I think so, because it's there then.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, it's easier than us going back and forth.
You see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll make it larger. We just.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Good for me.
For me.
Alright, so what I'm gonna try, what I'm gonna try to do, and I'm gonna be working with three different. Wish I had three hands tonight, I don't. But I've got two or three different documents in front of me. I handed out today the recommendations. And I expanded on them from their resolution to include all of the voting standards. So as we go through this, so I'm gonna go through the document, I'm gonna take us through the first change. And so the numbering, as we go through, won't be completely sequential. Because like Article Two, item number two is repeated throughout the document. It goes through the alphabet almost twice, I think, right? Article Two, no, just through M. And then one of our others goes through the alphabet quite a bit. So we will. We will, yeah, goes through almost twice in the alphabet. And so you'll see a number of changes in the definitions, actually, so those will be sequential. The first change came from a member of the council who thought that paragraphs one and three were redundant. And so I put it all into one, into Article One. So it's a pretty simple change. So, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any negative comments? No? Okay, good.
So now we're gonna go through the, yeah, sorry.
No, as a thing, it's just longer now. Usually it's easier to read when it's, you know, in a simple sentence, but it's fine.
Thank you, Angela, for defending my original draft. You know, but I thought it was a reasonable concession to the.
That's fine.
That's, sometimes that's what happens when you draft by committee. And when they have the final vote, that's the other thing. No, I thought it was pretty good the way it was, but it is what it is. Now we're gonna start going through the definitions. There's a series of minor changes here. The major change is trying to get some consistency, border commission means as opposed to changing it. So we're trying to maintain some uniformity. The big change here is the common council is not a board or commission. There are distinguishing elements, and so the definition of board commission specifically excludes the common council. So when, so you'll see at some points, when there are things that should apply to the common council, say boards or commissions and the common council or vice, vice versa. They wanted to make sure in budgeted entity that authority was characterized by, created by the city in accordance with law. I think it was pretty self-evident, but I didn't think it hurt to make that modification.
Steve, can you just go back up? This is read that sentence again, the one, yeah, that one, let me see. So means for the purposes of this charter and accept right of the law, all boards, agencies, like. Yeah, I mean, I guess we define it later, but I guess the question would be then, if it's not a board or commission, what is it? And do we need to say it stated here?
It's a legislative body, the council is a legislative body. That is defined, yeah. So it is defined in the.
I know, I know, but I just, I guess, yeah, it's fine, it's fine.
Alright.
Well, let me just ask the question, in the blue is coming out?
No, well, the ones that are crossed out are coming out. The underlined is going in.
Okay, so then the definition of the common council is in there somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay.
But for purposes of this charter, it's not, it's not considered a board or commission. That's what this says.
Yeah, you'll see in number nine defines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the legislative body of the city.
Yes.
What we did here is in seven, we had a defined term and we didn't use it. We kept using capital projects program. We now have modified this so that it talks about the specific proportion of the five-year term for which it is proposed to authorize expenditures during a fiscal year. Basically, it is the year of the fiscal year, it is the fiscal year. A year number one in the five-year plan is the capital budget, basically. That's how it is defined.
Well, I have a question on this, that the, the five-year projection, actually, you know, they're dealing with six years. The current, any, the current year plus five additional years. So I find this confusing. And the five-year program was, I, we had put in the term proposed. It's not finalized until, you know, they revisit it in the, in the next year.
Well, the way it's defined here is the five years is five years, and the first year of the five years is the capital budget.
I don't believe that's how it, how it functions. I don't think that's correct.
That's the way it's been in the charter all along. I don't know what to tell you.
Can it be checked?
Yeah, we need to check.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to check with Henry. It's, because my understanding, it's a projection, the five-year program, which has only been in effect a few years, it's not, it hasn't been going on forever. Is, is a proposed five-year, and the concept was to get departments and, and to be able to plan for the future. And we, we had proposed in our original language, I believe. So we need to check that. Does anybody else have any recollection on that point?
No, but I do have a question. Would it be that the capital budget happens every year then?
It does happen every year, and it's set for one year. And then my understanding, and in addition to that, they, there is a proposed five-year program.
So then my question then would become, if it happens every year, the capital budget happens every year, and it's the beginning of the five years, then every year, there's another beginning of five years, or?
It's, I think the simplest way is that the discussion is six years during, during any capital project, any capital budget review, the current year that you're going into, and then five additional years. And if, you know, if I'm wrong, you know, we need, it's confusing here.
Tell me what's confusing.
Specifically, this is, I read this, is that a, the five-year program is voted on as, as into, into a proposal. It's not, it, it was, my understanding, it was a, the five-year program is our proposed plans. They're not finite, and they're not voted on in perpetuity to be included in the following years. It is a, a process in order to modernize and make the planning program for the city more efficient.
So if it said that is the specific portion of the five-year program for which it is proposed to authorize expenditures during the current fiscal year, or during the subsequent fiscal year. But that would still be basically four years of projection, one year of concrete proposals.
I don't think that's it. I think there are six years, not five.
Alright, no one has brought that up before, so let's see.
Well, I think we go back to when we first did that, when we were meeting with Henry. You, there was a lot of discussion over this at that time.
Yeah, but the five-year, the definition of five-year capital budget, and I will say that having projected is a little difficult. It means the projected five-year program of projected capital budgets, capital expenditure, I think one of those projected has to come out. To which consideration must be given by the budget entities to whom the responsibility is vested. And in the manner prescribed by the charter, the first year of the five-year projections is referred to as the capital budget. So the projection becomes the budget for the first year, and the other four years are what you're looking at. So I don't see anything about a sixth year in any of the language. I'll check with Henry.
Yeah, okay.
No changes in eight, nine, 10. I think we took language in 11. We took language from another portion of the charter. That is the language that's added to the definition of days. For some reason, we had that language sitting in Article Four, Section 4-10K2. And one of the council members suggested we move it forward, and I think it makes sense to have it up front in the beginning of the charter. They recommended deleting of a permanent nature, which I think is an excellent recommendation. It's an employee who heads any department, has substantial control of a permanent nature over other municipal employees and is directly accountable to the mayor. No one could figure out what that meant, and it just seemed like a dangerous provision. So that's coming out.
Everybody agreed?
Agreed, yes.
I thought we were taking that out before.
Yeah.
Don't, don't you remember taking it out?
I do not. It was in, it was in here, and now it's out, so. I did not remember taking that out.
Okay.
They recommended. We took out the reference to the statute. And just left it at the positions that are elected officials in the city. Change number 15, that's 15. Seems like.
Where did the asset come from on N16?
Well, that doesn't make sense. Let me just see what that's supposed to be. Number 16. Remove statutory reference, create explanatory footnote. That's, that word should not be in there. Asset should not be in there. That was a term, because I had as set forth in, there was a statutory reference, and that did not come out.
Okay.
15.
Again, I'm just gonna voice my objection to that not being really defined as who electors are. I've done it several times, and it's not been changed, but I just wanna say it one more time. I think it has, needs a better definition there as to who an elector is, because it means nothing to me as contained in the general statutes.
Well, here's what we did. This is what we did. At the time of the adoption of the charter, so this is added. The municipal office is defined, an elective office, and then, oh yeah, you know, we already had it in here. If you take a look at footnote number, letter C, at the time of the adoption of the charter, the term elector is defined in CGS 9-1E as follows, there's your definition. That's what an elector is, and we put it right on the same page.
Yeah, but you, you're still using the same word, elector, in a town. I mean, what?
That's the definition, I don't know what to tell you. This is literally the statutory definition. I can't change that, so I can't.
That's an issue, Steve. It's, that, that's fine for you to refer people to that.
But read the last sentence, "In the common parlance, elector may be the equivalent to a registered voter."
Okay, can't that be up top?
Because it's not. It's a, we can't, we can't change the law. I, that's why I use the term in the common parlance. I'm not gonna recommend that we put common parlance language into a legal document. We put this commentary in here so the public can see what it, what it means. And number two, this is not on the board of, on the council's recommendations, we can't make any changes that they didn't recommend. But we addressed this, we addressed the issue. I don't know what else to tell you, you know. I, I just honestly don't know what else to say, and we can't make any changes other than Scrivener's changes at this point.
Okay, let's move on.
17, 17, I have the question, which I'll talk to Henry about on, on the issue of a five-year program of capital expenditures. And then, under the definition of law, item number 20, whoops, we added regulatory enactments as being part of what law is. We'll talk about majority vote of the council in a little bit.
Steve, let's go back. We just ran over for the second time the capital budget. Why is it in two places?
Because it's two different definitions. One is the capital budget, and the other is the five-year program of capital expenditures.
Okay.
That's been defined that way for many, many months.
Okay.
It's not, it's not redundant.
Okay.
Um, 24. This was a, it's not an alteration, but substantial rewrite. The council wanted to make sure that the meeting provisions gelled with the public notice provisions. And so I made the changes to make it clear that they work that way, so that we had public notice as defined in this charter as opposed to where the posting should be, and the other section deals with it. And it's the common council or any boards and commissions, see, that's where you get the breakdown. Because it's not just boards and commissions, it would be the common council boards and commissions.
Yeah.
Steve, just one, one tiny net, there is the, the defined in this charter for A, but then it's, it's all plural after that.
Let's see, defined in the charter.
For A, and then it's.
It should be just a meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Meeting, public hearing.
Yeah.
Or any, yeah.
Got it, I got it. Alright, we didn't fix that. And so that is that fixed. It's more technical than. But I think it reads better. Guard, alright.
I mean, I think the last sentence is redundant, but it's, it's not fatal.
Meeting or public hearing, there's also government regulatory practice and procedures set forth in general statutes. We already say, we already say it's gotta be compliance with the general statutes, is that what you're saying?
Twice, indeed, twice, yeah.
I think we could probably take that as a Scrivener's correction. What do you think?
Okay with me.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Alright, now operating bud, is everybody okay now with 24?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our 25 is operating budget. And I had the board, and it's the problem when you're working on two cities. I've been calling the board of reps, the common council in Stanford, vice versa, so we fixed it. I caught that one, actually. And then personnel, personnel should be personnel. Although I will tell you, it said personal services in the current charter. And then 26 is a fix. There was no change there, there was, there was a Scrivener's change. Yeah, that's, that's a Scrivener's change. We have the definition of ordinances, no changes there. Public hearing, you'll see that the change was to make sure that the common council was added, since it's not in the definition of border commission. Remember, the council thought we should specify the operating and capital budget. Minor changes in 29. Their Scrivener's, well, no, they're, 29 was fixed as in concert with 24. We added a definition of quorum. It was in the body of the document, and members of the council thought it should be defined upfront. And then the referendum, again, was the operating and or capital budgets as opposed to the budget. Whoops. Whoops, sorry. Regulation, just including but not limited to some minor modification there. I think that was a Scrivener's change. Resolution. Some minor changes there. They thought that it'd be just simpler to take that sentence out that was crossed out and add it to the opening of the definition. I had no. I thought it was a Scrivener's change. Vacancy, this is not a substantive change, it's just a transfer of language from the body of the document to the definition. Since these are the bases for determining a vacancy, they thought it made sense to actually put it into the definition of vacancy. Which I thought made some sense.
Under E there, there's, it looks like there's, okay, it took it out, whatever it was. Right, this was your cursor, it was your cursor, I guess.
My cursor was there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Now, here's a change, this, I created this new subsection. You'll recognize part one was, was a, was a freestanding sentence at the end of the definition section, but I'm calling it use of terms, because it is a use of terms. We're not defining the word shall. We're saying that when shall is used, this is how you use it. We added something here, and this was the result of the meeting Monday night that we're proposing. Remember, one of the things that we had to do is we had to look at all of the voting standards of the, of the council and the boards and commissions. And so we, as you may recall, and you'll see it in a few moments as we go through the document. The term entire membership is used on a fairly regular basis. And it's one of those, if you, part of parliamentary entities, it's one of those terms that is problematic. Robert's rules does not really define it well. I've been part of a dozen at least over the years. You know, parliamentary rulings on what it means, and we decided, let's just define it. And the way it's defined is that the entire membership is, the entire body. It includes those who are present, those who are absent from a meeting, those who are present but not voting. But it does not include any vacancies on the body. So if you're a 15-member body, and you have to take a vote, a two-thirds vote, or 50% vote, you know, a majority vote from the entire membership, and there's a vacancy, not an absence, a vacancy, you need to have two-thirds of the 14 votes. If you have, you know, and then, and it's still two-thirds of the 14 votes, even if there's people who are absent or not voting. So they can impact things, but we thought it was, the council really thought it made a lot of sense to define it so that you don't have an interpretive problem. You just look.
Yeah, I, I think this is excellent.
Yeah.
Should we spell out two-thirds?
Yes.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, because I do it everywhere else, don't I? Sorry.
And, and they, they didn't want common in front of council on the second line.
We can do that. I wrote the language, I left it out, so we just comment in there, that's easy.
Okay.
Yeah, and I ran it by a couple of the members. I will, after tonight, I will run this by them, just to make sure they're okay, because for our final, for our final approvals on this. So that is that change, which will show up later on your list. It's not on the list here, because it shows up. It shows up when we get to item number 21, but we won't have to go back. We'll talk about it then. Item number, let's see what shows up next on, on the list here. Again, I think 24D, I think this is a Scrivener's, is this the Scrivener's category? Hold on. Yeah, these are RADA or Scrivener's errors, or let's take a quick look at, to make sure that I didn't go any further, or that members of the council, and there were a couple of members of the council who actually looked at the document very carefully. I was really appreciative and grateful that they did. So these.
So when they say updated, that's general, so that, that's vague, then how often is, is it required? They didn't go to that point?
No. No. No, periodically updated. There's no, there was no timeframe. The period, and periodically updated was here already, so we, they did not make any changes to that. Recusal, I think this substitute change, yes, item number three. In the case of members of the council and any board or commission, such recusal shall be placed in the public record. Filings of public disclosures may be addressed by ordinance. So they took out the town clerk standard and made it placed in the public record, whatever that may mean. You, you know, you may, if you think the town clerk should be in there, that would be the place to put it. But.
And, but the last sentence, filing a public disclosure is.
Maybe addressed by ordinance, yeah. And they would probably. And they would probably use the town clerk's office as the appropriate party. I would think the town clerk.
So if it's not done by then, then what is the process?
It doesn't say specifically, it says it shall be placed in the public record. So I would think the public record for a border commission would be its minutes, its minutes.
It's minutes.
Yeah, um, so I think at the very least, that would be the minutes. Um, I think their concern was, um, who has time to think about these things unless you know and have thought about it? But if you're on the floor of the body and the conflict comes up, and you, you, you hadn't looked at your agenda, which is possible. I'd like to think our council members are all conscientious, but you didn't look at the agenda and said, oh my god, I've got a conflict. Um, I think that they were concerned that the language, which is the current language in the charter was, um, too restrictive. And just assume that you knew this before you came to the meeting, so I think that's why they left the public record standard as opposed to the town clerk.
And, and what was their rationale for, uh, the ordinance sentence? That, to me, that seems superfluous.
Well, I think I recommended that if the council wants to establish a different standard or, or, or additional places where they would have to do it, or a process by which they do it. Um, it gave the council the ability to, um, adopt an ordinance to, to further.
And, and that would circum, circumvent the code of ethics. Then potentially.
It would have to be in, it would have to be in, in, um, I mean, they get to the council gets to approve the code of ethics anyhow, but the, uh, presumably they would be doing it in accordance with the standards that are set, established in the charter, stand, standards of conduct. The ethics ordinance, they approved the ethics ordinance, so presumably they would meld whatever recusal standards are and procedures with whatever is in the ethics ordinance. In fact, the ethics ordinance would be a great place to amend. Um, you know, um, you could maybe address by an amendment of the ethics ordinance or something like that. I mean, that, you know, that would be, um, would not be a inappropriate thing to say.
But, but is that line really necessary?
Well, they can, they can pass it, they can do by ordinance without that line being in there. But, uh, this just makes it explicitly clear that they can. Um, and I actually recommended it because I said, what if you want to have it filed with the town clerk? Or that it should be filed with the town clerk if it's a, an ongoing, um, conflict. Um, why shouldn't there be, um, uh, very often, and you don't have this in Norwalk to my knowledge, maybe I'm wrong. But in a lot of communities, you have finance disclosure statements. And I think that's what this was recommended for, is it's just in case at some point down the line you want to do disclosure statements, financial disclosure statements. This gives you the very clear authority to do so, so no one could argue that you don't have the ability to do disclosure statements, because that's what this would cover, in my view.
But the fact that we don't have, I, I just find this sort of challenges the code of ethics unnecessarily.
Tell me how it challenges, not to debate, but.
Because it can, yeah, because they, the council has the ability to, uh, create an ordinance that would be different than the code of ethics.
Well, that's their privilege, they're the council, they're a legislative body. They're the ones who create the ethics ordinance. They have the ordinance authority, no one else has ordinance authority. That's why I said, if you want to do it, maybe address by an amendment of the ethics ordinance.
Yeah, well, that, that makes more sense by, by the ethics ordinance. But not a separate one.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Patsy.
Yeah, it sort of infers.
Creating a new ordinance for something that can be taken care of in the ethics ordinance, so just be explicit about it, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I said five minutes ago, so.
Yeah, nobody can just add the word ethics before ordinance right at the end, and that will take care of that.
I'll take care of that, yeah, I've already have the note on that, I think that's the way to do it. Yeah, they have that authority, good. Alright. Two dash seven, I think is the next change, let me take a look. I'm going slowly, because there might be Scrivener's changes. Alright, see, I think this was a Scrivener's change, twenty-four E, seems like a lot of words there, so I want to take a quick look at it for a second, this is twenty-four E. Does it tell me anything more? It's a Scrivener's, it's just clarifying edits. I think that, um, the council member who made these proposals just thought it was more affirmative and more direct. Doesn't change anything. Um, they did take out various groups, have authority for the groups. Um, so they had recommended taking that out, but we, we just don't have the authority to tell them they need to be democratic. And that they need to have levels of decorum, that's up to the private community organizations. I believe that was the thinking, so that was not a substantive change, but there's a lot of blue there, so I just wanted to stop there, pause there for a second. And again, in C one, you see, we added the council, you want me to say common council? Although we define it ear, yeah, earlier in that paragraph, we say common council.
Fine.
I'm fine with it.
Alright. Alright, okay, so this is the first, I believe of the, of the, um, voting standard, so I'm gonna go in sequence, so we're gonna come to twenty-one at some point. But we will have seen a number of the items in twenty-one. So if you want to just take a look, I mean, I think my note says it all. There's no change to the standard here, the standard here was two-thirds of the entire membership of the council board or commission. Um, and, um, so there was no change except for, remember, the definition of entire membership, which we deal with upfront. So that, you'll see that note throughout here, so this was not a, there was no change when we went through these, uh, items on Monday night. They thought this two-third standard of the entire membership was the right standard for the adoption of rules for your bodies. Okay? Uh, twenty-four E, this is another Scrivener's. Seven dash one E, why is that, let me just take a quick look at this one second, so. There's one E. Okay. Um, we took that last. Yeah, because it's, it's, uh, it's given in that sec, may initiate proceedings to that was seven dash one E says that. Um, I have no problem whether it's in or out. It's kind of a declaration that it's there, when you look at it, you'll see it. Um, and if you breach rules, that's what can happen to you. Um, I think their, their opinion was that, that was bootstrapping. Uh, I don't know if I agree or disagree, but that was their recommendation, and I have no vote, so. That, so that language is here, I don't know whether you want to keep it, or whether you want to, uh, or.
Okay, are there any comments from anybody? It seems to make it clear to me, very clear that.
Retain the language.
Anybody else?
Fine.
To leave it or take it out?
Good, well, keep it?
Keep it.
Okay. I just want to make sure, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Alright, so we will keep.
Okay.
Let me just make the note, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to.
It's okay, yeah.
Twenty-four E, I'm looking in three different places here. Twenty-four E. Is F, keep sentence. Alright, got it, starts in two or three different points, um. The next change is gonna look substantive, but it's not really. Um, I deleted the compliance and cooperation provision. Uh, not I, they had recommended, come, um, when I say hi, I'm talking about the council recommended deletion of compliance and cooperation, it is in several other places. Uh, they thought it was redundant, and it's, it's, it is clear that, uh, in fact, it's, you see it in three dash seven, right at the end of this. So it was repeated twice within two paragraphs of each other, that's how it was caught. You'll see, you'll see in a second here, there, required cooperation. Alright. And we, uh, we added language to make sure the language, the other one had, the one that we deleted had more language, we incorporated that language into the required cooperation provision.
That's good.
Yeah, the, I, they did a nice job, uh, I, I gotta say, I wish all my city councils were as conscientious as this one, I, I will say for the record.
Uh, they, they initiated the pro, the ish, this whole process, so.
Well, they, they all do, but they all do. The, the, it's a very good, very good council, you're very lucky, um. Uh, E, is that the next change, let's see, three dash two D. Oh, I think that's three dash two E. Um, time polls is open, they added the polls are required to open and remain open, they wanted to emphasize open and remain open as required by the general statutes. I think in terms of voting rights, who could complain about that?
It's good.
I just said you want an exclamation point at the end of the sentence? Um. We left, uh, registered voters, I think, I think I picked that up. Yeah. Yeah, that's an item number six.
They, they didn't obviously discuss reducing the, the number of constables.
None of that came up, no, well, they did not raise that, they did not raise that in our discussion. It was discussed, but no, no action, no recommendation.
Okay.
Alright, selectmen. This is number six also, the office shall be abolished at the end of the term, event of a vacancy occurs prior to the end term. The office shall be abolished at the end of the term, or in the event of a, a vacancy occurs prior to the end term, at the time of the vacancy. Yeah, so if one of these positions becomes vacant, it doesn't get filled. The term, the team, the provisions that are be, the, um, the, um, officers that are being phased out in the, uh.
Okay.
Alright, uh, yeah, I thought that was actually a nice pickup. Uh, D is Scrivener's. Uh, using the de, defined term, I did not use the defined term, we put it in. Uh, twenty-four G was any provisions which are in conflict, um, are nullified as of twelve oh one, any provisions which are in conflict with this change, the change being the, uh, business day of January commencement of terms, uh, would be nullified, uh, prior to, uh, nullified in twenty-two, uh, the first business day of twenty twenty-six. Any provision, let me just see something here.
Can you go back Steve to that?
Yeah.
Would be able to read the whole thing.
With the exception of the mayor and the one, all of the public officials. Oh. This may have to be changed. Remember, this is, we're in a, uh, we, we can discuss this issue now. And this will be a change which might alter this language. Do you mind for a second, if I go down just a little bit? Remember, there was a proposal, uh, by the, uh, board of the, the common council, which is which is deeper into this, but you want to do it now sequentially while we're going through the document, rather than jumping around? This is the four-year term versus two-year term.
Hmm. Yeah, let's, let's deal with it, yeah.
Item number twenty-two. Um, continue to review issues pertaining to the term of office, so this section, remember I have a transition for the mayor's term, that's what got me thinking about it. Um, so I think you need to make your decision now. Uh, I'm, I'm not telling you what to do, but we're running out of time. But we need to make the decision about, I thought you guys were leaning in the direction of retaining the two-year term.
I thought we had voted on that.
Voted on that.
Alright, well, I did that, I, I, alright, but this is the time, let's formally do it now, and I'll make the changes for the next meeting. So you are, so you, you are for the two-year term of mayor.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Alright, so we're maintaining status quo on that, alright, I will fix those sections. Alright. So we don't have to worry about those provisions, because January those terms don't apply any longer. Uh, are, do we, with the change of the start date of the term, we still want to retain, I assume the transition office?
Yeah.
Here's, okay.
I, I know, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, and they made a couple of changes, they basically flipped some things around. We're relating to the training materials pertaining to the budget process, so it's not really a substantive change. It was a flip of the sentence. And let me just, let me just right here say that, um, that all of you should take a look at the latest draft that I sent out today and still send your cards and letters in, uh, Angela, I'm looking at you, uh, and others, that if you see anything else like, like, uh, Tyler picked up plural and that kind of stuff, let's continue to look at this, I, I ask for an opportunity to keep reviewing until we have to publish in the newspaper. That's the, the deadline for picking those things up, but let's see what we can do to catch them, and we caught a lot at the council. But you know, it's never perfect, so let's see where we go.
But Steve, are we gonna get a new, uh, version after tonight with so that it's easier for us to read, to do that? Or are we gonna be reading?
This is pretty final, I mean, the only big change I'm gonna make is a, as of tonight, is the, is the mayoral stuff, so.
I know, but taking out the crossouts.
Oh, I, I'll send you a clean version. If you don't want the crossouts, I'll send you the clean version, that I have. I will send you version nine, um.
Does that make sense to everybody, is it easier for everybody to read?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And can we pick one up if we want to from City Hall?
I'll send it to Zuma, and make sure she has it, um, alright, let me, do me, let me, let me, let me, uh, just do one thing right now. Um, while I'm sitting here, and while you're asking me. Um, is I'm going to, uh, uh, send it right now, uh, I just want to get it done. Here it is.
That have everything else that we're gonna talk about in it?
Everything that we've done tonight, it won't have the change in the mayoral term. Um, it will, uh.
So why not, can we get it when you do that?
That could, I'm not gonna have that tomorrow. Uh, and maybe not for this weekend, I have, I'm, I'm all booked tomorrow in Stanford, I'm, I'm finishing three charters right now. Um, so my recommendation is work with the document that we have through today. And the other changes will be relatively minor, uh, or there'll be very few, I would think, um. So let me just, um, I mean, I, if you want to wait till early next week, be my guest, it's just we're gonna run out of time, is my only concern, so let me just send that to Zuma.
And, and on, on time, can you just refresh our memories on the timelines, next steps, I mean, when the next meetings are?
Alright, let me do it right now.
Fairly random these days.
Alright, so here we are, we're right, is this on screen, you see the screen?
Yeah, we do.
Alright.
Yeah.
Tonight is, tonight's the third, I have the next meeting down for next, which I hope and expect will be the last meeting on the ninth. Uh, because the intent is to file this document on either Thursday the tenth, or maybe Friday the eleventh, I think Thursday the tenth, because I want it to be in the packet for the Norwalk council, which is meeting on April fifteenth. So this has got to be done next Wednesday. So I, I think we need to understand that we probably need a meeting, I don't think it'll be a long meeting.
I, I, I thought we had it on the eighth, now we're changing it to the ninth.
The day I was given was the ninth. The day I was given was the ninth.
Okay.
Is that all right for everybody?
Yep, for me, yes.
That's Wednesday.
Wednesday the ninth. Yeah, we couldn't do the Wednesday this week, but the next, Wednesday, the next week is all right for everybody.
Okay.
Um, all right, and then I will be, Pat, are you still gonna be in, uh?
Yes, um, yes.
So maybe. Send you a signature page and all that kind of stuff, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
All right. Um. All right, let me go back to the document. There we go. Good. All right, so I gotta fix that, let me just, this is a big one, the mayoral change. Yeah, I, I knew we took a sense of the body, I didn't know it was a final vote, and I apologize for that, I could have. Done that, but I didn't. Uh, and this language was clarified. For the, um. Um, for the council districts. And it has a transition provision that references you to section fourteen dash one. Which is the, um. Uh, transition language at the back of the document. Uh, new changes, Board of Ed, I don't think. Oh, all right, this is another substantive request by. Council member Camacho. Um, and this is, and the reason I'm gonna stop at some of these is, uh, eh, uh. Co- co- uh, Council member Camacho did not get his recommendations in till the last night. Of the debate. And so there was no time to, uh, really discuss them, and that's why I have names attached on item twenty-five. He wants to delete. From this section. Um, the term minority. Party representation, I, 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 I know what he's trying to do. I didn't. And, and I think it's the worst, I, I said this to him. The worst title in the, well, it's one of the worst titles in this general statutes. Because it really is a cap on majority representation. And, and in some ways, party representation is fine, but it's, uh. Um. But you have to comply with the minority party representation statute. Um. And so. You know, uh, all this one doesn't refer to minority parties, this is about party representation. Yeah, maybe you can, maybe you can delete it. I'm looking at it. Party representation, but ultimately there is a state statute that governs it. But the maximum number candidates who may be in the Senate, it's not referring to the minority party representation. Provision, so. Maybe you can do that. I'll leave it up to you, I don't have a legal objection to it, so, yeah, I'll leave it to you.
Uh, I, I'm confused on this, th- is this what Ed? Wrote?
No, 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 this, this provision in the charter, he wants to eliminate the word minority. That's all. He wants to eliminate this word. And have, just refer to party representation. Later in the document, he did not raise it in that section, so that, that's my confusion. Um. It does talk about minority party representation statute.
I don't think we need, I agree with them, that we don't need it, um, it, cause it's, it's, it's explained in the next, the sentence, the maximum number of candidates. By any one party, it's clear.
Yeah, it is clear.
Yeah.
Whoops.
And it's. And it's always clear on the ballot still.
All right, so you, you're okay with eliminating it?
Yeah.
I, yeah. Yeah.
Angela, are you?
Yeah, he did not raise it in the other section, which specifically talks about that statute, so I'll take the word minority out.
Yep, no, I'm okay with it.
All right, so, approved. That'll be exciting when you get to item twenty-five, you'll see it's been approved. So one last thing to worry about when we get to the end of the document. All right, what am I doing here?
Okay.
I'm juggling things, so it's, I just, there we go. All right, so the next change is.
Taking out the fifth district.
Uh, yes, tha- that was a, yeah, yeah, right, it's a Scrivener's change. Um, okay, you're gonna, you're gonna say, oh my God, what happened here, do you remember what we did with this? We move this to the definition of vacancy. All these things. So that we move them to the definition, that's why it looks. More. Ominous than it is, it's in the definition of vacancy. Yeah, it didn't, it did make sense, yeah, it was, it was a very cumbersome opening, yeah.
But I don't see, uh, the way it starts, the council must. Does that need to be changed?
No, listen, look at, look at just before, whenever any elected public official. For any reason, fails to qualify or a vacancy occurs, comma, the council must, having been called together, so it starts right here.
Okay, that's, that's hard for me to read sometimes, okay.
I get it. Um, made a change in B one. Because no one, uh, I don't know why I didn't catch. We, we call it qualified as opposed to, uh, certified. Uh. And, uh, so that's a minor change, but that's the normal term that's used, but your charter said certified. Um, sounds like a car. Um. What they used to call used cars, now it's certified, um. So the next one is a Scrivener's. Change, it's the person chosen to fill the vacancy. Um. Shall have the powers of the former person, so it was really a.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a change. Minor Scrivener's change. Uh, on the mayor, it's disability of the mayor, that's what we're talking about, it just makes it clearer. Uh, again, more Scrivener. Changes. This one was recommended by somebody in the council, on, uh, to a temporary absence. As opposed to an unexplained absence. Because we don't really talk about explaining and unexplaining. Uh, but this is all language that we fixed, somebody caught that, that's a great catch, I wish I could say it was me, it was not me. Um. I think the next one is our next of the election standards. Um. Yes, so this was the next of the election standards in paragraph twenty. Twenty-one, um. And, um. They, they kept the twelve, the number twelve as the firm. Number, but they took out present and voting, um. Because it really doesn't make any, it didn't make any difference, you need twelve votes. To. To make this determination, this is a, one of the more serious things they do, this is the issue of determining that the mayor, um. Is, um. Is incapacitated, in fact, so it's a lock in twelve. And we, they simply recommended eliminating the term present and voting.
Okay.
All right. I'll try to move it, I'm, I, I'm trying to do this deliberately, so if you want me to go faster, I will, but I thought it was important, um.
What, uh? Okay, to the town clerk, okay?
Yeah, it's a town clerk, somebody corrected that. As we go through this. Um, and then you have a sustained. A sustained absence or disability, because the term is sustained absence and. Uh, we, uh, thought it should be clarified that that is what it is, we're talking about. Okay, here's another decision point, I think. Well, the first is a vote. Right here. Is another. They, and they didn't change the standard, this is about expulsion of council members, we did talk about. Whether they wanted to have, uh, if, if it's twelve for getting rid of the mayor, do you wanna have twelve here, they just decided to keep the two-thirds. Of the entire membership. And the only change substantively is, uh, the. Issue of the entire membership, which is defined earlier in the document, as we did at the beginning. Now. Council member Camacho. So this is, uh, item number twenty-six, so it's another one of. This is writing sequentially, that doesn't, the, um, the newer proposals. Did not follow with the numbering, they came in after, so that's the reason. It says number twenty-six when we're still dealing with lower numbers. Uh. Attorney Camacho, uh, council member Camacho, who happens to be attorney Camacho, um, wants to replace. Uh, is it all of this? Yes, he wants to replace this language with the language in yellow. And so what he wants to say, I'm not sure there's a substantive difference, I think he just thought it read better. And, uh.
One is a public hearing though, and the other is what? Is found after a public hearing. And what does the other one say?
Let's see here.
Oh, or following a public hearing.
Yeah, following a public hearing.
Yeah, they both, they both say.
They both say the same thing.
What the main diff- I'm just trying to see what the main dif- if there's any differences.
I'm taking a look, any member who, uh, holding office is found after a public hearing, I think he thought it meant, it, it read more.
Okay. Okay, there's an extra period at the end there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I see it.
Okay.
He just reworded it.
He reworded it, it's the same thing, it's just really depends on what, I mean, basically, I didn't play with the sections, one of the old sections. Of the charter. Uh, where it goes, I'm not gonna go look at the footnotes right now, but it's, it's, uh, something we did not play with at all. He read it, and you'll see, he also wants to get rid of something else that we left. That was ancient, that we just didn't touch. Um, I have no. Um. I think it, I think it reads, it's a little.
I like it. He cleaned it up, yeah, he just modernized it, basically.
Yeah, he modernized it, exactly right, I think that's the right term, so.
It also says that it's really, um. After a public hearing, they will. Vote.
Yeah.
Well, the other one does.
But.
It says following a public hearing, yeah.
But this one, I think is, reads better.
Yeah, cause it, it's, it's, the sequence is better, you have the public hearing first, and then you take action.
All right, let me, um. All right, so let me. Mark that, so you're, you're okay with his language?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't consider it a substantive change, but I didn't want to substitute it. Um, without your review of it, so that's why it was.
Thank you.
In a separate category, all right, so that's been approved, um. That's good, so when we get to twenty-six, that'll be one less thing to do. Um. I think. I mean, here's another voting standard. Whoops. Um, another voting standard, this is on the commencement of a removal proceeding. Give the notice. And. It was by the entire, a majority of the entire membership of the. Count, the common council, so it's the same standard. But it's, um. The, again, we're adding the definition within entire membership, so just pointing out the entire membership, we, we were going to do. Entire membership of the common council, except for, but, except for. Vacancies, but it's more than vacancies, remember I told you, if you're absent and, 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 or you're not voting, you get counted. Um, so I thought it was better to throw it into a definition, that's why we did it. Uh, that way, so. And the other changes were more. A delineation. Of. Applicable sections is what it comes down to, I think it was a clarifying provision. Twenty-four N, let me just double check that. See if there's anything more. Minor internal reference corrections, that's what they were. Yeah, the, the internal reference corrections were wrong, I fixed them, is what I did. Because I did go through all the internal ref- reference provisions as I was doing this.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing, again, this is minor. Changes, uh, this is content of public notice, here we do talk about goes to the city clerk with a copy to the town clerk. So that both clerks have the public notice provisions in these misconduct cases and neglect cases. Uh, another voting standard. Another voting standard, again, no change. And there's just the reference to the, um. Reference to the, um. Definition of entire meeting. Um, I think. We corrected the title of this section to appointed public officials as opposed to the mouthful of things that were in there. Those are all included in that definition. Uh, Nora said, Steve, wonderful definition, why didn't you use it in the title? And I said, duh. Is what I said to her, I did not, now we do, so that was a good catch. Um, it's amazing you work with a document for how many months now?
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Yeah. Uh, again, we use the term here throughout, so it's really correcting. Some of the terminology. And Nora, by the way, was a drafts person for the New York State Senate, so it was wonderful having her. As a helper. Um. Minor. You'll see a lot of semicolons that were fixed by the council member as well. All right, is this a substantive change, let me see here, twenty-four P. Uh, we, as a result of a conversation, no one quite understood what working. Uh, agreements were, except that they are collective bargaining agreements. And that's why that language is clarified that way.
Okay.
Um, and also, they did make a substantive change here, I think, uh, or do we, some, some. If the appellant is reinstated by the judge, the appellant. Must be paid from the date of dismissal. And we say is maybe paid, um, I don't know where that came from, I don't have a note next to that. Does anybody have feelings about that? I don't know where that came from.
It mean, does that mean we don't have to follow the judge's decision?
Well, if the judge says they have to be paid. They do.
Yeah.
If they're simply being paid, and the judge is silent on that, uh, the city can make its decision about whether they wanna pay him or not. This provision said they had to be paid.
Right.
So. Uh, I think you wanna leave it up to, I think you leave it to maybe paid. Uh, yeah, that's, I think that's the intent here, maybe paid. Until restored to is decided by. The court in the discretion of the court, the judge in the discretion of the court. Because it's highly, it's unlikely that a court would say you were instating the person, uh, you know, Michael will probably confirm this. Uh, we're instaying the person, but you decide whether you wanna pay him, I, I don't think that the lawyer for the reinstated person would. Not bring up the issue of compensation, so I think that the may is, we're not telling you to do this, your honor, it's your discretion. And, and whatever the judge decides, they will do. I think that's the reason, and I didn't mark it as a Scrivener's correction. Whoops, all right, uh. Oh, this is the working agreement, okay, I did this stuff, all right, um. Again, another, more. Scrivener's corrections in terms of just editing. Let's see, legislative power. Nothing. Substantive here, these are more. I think this is a change, we moved quorum from here to the definition. Um. We changed the date of the.
The council meeting.
Meeting, yeah, yeah, to the second Tuesday after the election. Uh.
You, you cha- That's not gonna follow the first. Business day of January?
That doesn't make sense.
No.
No.
Oh, no, no, it does make sense, because, um, this will take effect. In the future, um. Uh, because. Yeah, we have to look at this, um, and decide. With the two-year term for mayor. Yeah, this will take place after twenty twenty-five. I think it's the second Tuesday in January twenty-five, twenty twenty-five and thereafter. Because we can't affect it for this year. Because the charter won't be approved until November. Then that's the reason for this, so I think in B. It needs to say. Required to meet on the second Tuesday. In, in January. Um. Uh, twenty. Twenty. Six. And thereafter, following the election of the council.
Remember there was some discussion about that, is that what we were, they were discussing that they didn't, they, they, they brought it up? Um, the council people brought it up, that we wanted to change it. And they thought that they. Didn't have. That they needed to go back. They didn't wanna wait until January, was that it?
Yeah, but they didn't change on it, they didn't make a recommendation on it.
But Steve, on this, uh. If, if the, uh, the charter passes. It becomes effective as of. if, if the, uh, the charter passes, it becomes effective as of what day?
Um, January first, or unless there's something.
No, the charter, no, the charter, not, not, not people taking office, charter itself.
The charter would become effective January one, twenty twenty four.
Yeah, I don't remember that, yeah, being, is that noted somewhere in this document?
Very last, very last page of this document.
Okay, okay, I just don't recall that.
It's, uh, well, the effective date, eleven dash.
Okay. Okay, great.
Um, but the reason the transition provision is here is kind of, uh, um, not really necessary because the current charter will still be in effect when they're reelected in twenty twenty three. So, I'm not sure we really need this transition provision, but I thought for purposes of clarity, it made some sense, but I, I'll be happy to take it out if you don't think it's.
I think.
When does the transition office open?
Well.
Comparison to the transition provision.
Yeah, see, I think the transition office won't, I mean, I have to look at it in the context of the changed mayoral term, but I think the transition office is probably going to be effective after the twenty twenty five election, is my guess. Because there's no way to make it effective, uh, here. Um, yeah, no, I have it effective on the fifth day of November twenty twenty five. Because there's no way to make it effective for twenty twenty three, because the charter won't be approved. I mean, I suppose you could put it in for this year, but if it doesn't get, if it doesn't pass, uh, there's a lot of preliminary work that somebody's going to have to do for a transitional office that doesn't get approved. Um, so that's why it was in for twenty twenty five.
Okay.
But I think this provision could probably come out.
I think it should come out.
Yeah, a little confusing.
It is, but I am going to add, they're required to meet on the second Tuesday, uh, in January twenty twenty six and, um, uh, every two years thereafter. To make that clear. Because, um, the current charter will still be in effect when this election occurs, and they'll be meeting in November under the current charter. But going forward, this will take effect in January twenty, twenty twenty six.
Twenty five? Well, they won't have an election.
Twenty twenty six after the twenty twenty five election.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. All right, good. Glad we caught that, oh, another. What's that?
I just said, oh, God.
Sorry, guys.
That's okay.
All right, here's one that, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk to council member Camacho since um, the language that's in A, I wrote very carefully based on home rule, uh, case law. Um, I want to walk through them with it and see if, um, if I think that his changes don't do a, an injustice, and I'm not saying that my language is better than his language. Uh, what I am saying is that we have case law that says it this way. Whether it's the most artful way to say it or not, um, uh, the fact is, if you have case law that says it this way, we get the benefit of being interpreted exactly as that case law has interpreted things, and so I want to talk to Ed and see what his thoughts are on that, and if he feels strongly about it, and it says what, you know, what we're trying to say, I'm not going to lose an awful lot of sleep, but if I can keep it the way the statute, um, uh, works, I, I think I'd prefer to do that, uh, so, um, since we're going to have to come back anyhow.
Can I ask? Just changing one word, right, I mean, it's just changing, um.
Essential.
Essential to indispensable, right, that's, that's the only change I see here.
And that, I was just wondering, if under two, essential to the declared objects, or is it supposed to be objectives?
No, it's objects, that's why.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's the case law, I, I, you know, I, I have no quarrel with that, what Ed's trying, I, I have no quarrel with the clarity that he's trying to bring to this. Uh, that, that's not the issue, my, my, um, I want to walk it through it with him to see whether he, I'll show him the cases, show him the language, tell him why I wrote it this way. No pride nor authorship, these are not my words, these are the words of the state Supreme Court. And, and so that's the reason I was using the language, but I'll talk to Ed about that.
Yeah, was, was Ed present on Monday night when, and discussed this?
Yes, he was.
Okay.
Well, we didn't discuss this, we discussed.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Talk to Ed.
All right.
We did not.
I'm okay with that, anybody else have any comments?
I'll talk to him about his thoughts on that, we'll come back to the final report when.
Okay.
All right, um, Patty, this is the one I think you brought up before, that we added this item four on boards and commissions. Uh, we really didn't, if you take a look at three, we took, uh, boards and commissions out of three and created them, um, uh, their own standard in four. Uh, because the voting standard. Let's just see here. Two thirds of the membership. Oh, yes, the difference is, um, the, the, under the departments, the board cannot initiate a change in divisions or departments, the mayor has to make the recommendation. And, and under four, the council wanted to have the ability, which is appropriate, to take on their own initiative, it could be at the request of the mayor or upon their own initiative, um, an ability to modify the, um, uh, the boards and commissions, to merge boards and commissions, to create new boards and commissions, to eliminate boards and commissions. Um, unlike the executive side, they thought, um, that, that that was a fully appropriate, uh, division of labor so that they could take the initiative, that's why the paragraph is split.
So they both, the mayor can do it and the county council, is that what you're saying, either or, or?
No, under departments, only the mayor can make the recommendation for boards and commission, the mayor or the council can do it. So the council can on its own motion move to modify a board or commission, it's a high standard, two thirds, plus the mayor has veto authority, so if they're doing something that the mayor really doesn't like, the mayor can veto it.
But is this considered a substantial change or not?
Well, it's not a substant-, well, it's only a substantial change because they divided, they created a slightly, um, yeah, because in.
It's a power they don't currently have.
It's a power they don't have, in three, they could only do either of these things at the request to the mayor. Uh, in four, they can now do boards and commissions on their own. Um, mayor is at the meetings, I don't think he objected to this, uh, so it is, it is a substantive, um, addition that they're requesting that we approve.
Uh, how well does that fall under the the, basically, the, the stuff that people have been saying in terms of us not changing anything substantially?
Exactly.
Well, yeah, we're making a few changes, you know, yeah.
I mean, that seems to be a lot, a, a big change to give them power to do something that they did not have before. I, I mean, to me.
And, and, uh, is there any one member that recommended this, or was this the whole council?
Well, the whole council approved it, so I don't, I don't remember who, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, I don't know who recommended this.
And the mayor. Why would, why did they want to do this?
Right.
Well, it's a pretty standard power for legislative bodies. I mean, most communities, in most communities, legislative bodies can, can, uh, can approve, can create departments, can eliminate departments, it's up to the mayor to veto. It's up to everybody to work together, but you have a very well, relatively weak legislative body. And, and, uh, they asked me the question, and I told them that this is not an inappropriate power for a border commission, and the mayor was there, I don't think the mayor objected to, I, I don't want to speak to the mayor. But he was at the meeting, so, um, this is something they approved, is it a substantive change? It's a change, it gives the legislative body a little more authority in one area. Um, in light of the fact that they are the appointing authority, and they have to make final decisions here. Um, you know, that's something you should take into account, I don't consider it a a structural, a huge structural change, it is a change, I can't argue that.
Yeah, it may not be a structural change as far as the charter goes hugely, but I think as far as common practice goes, it's a big change. What's, what's been common practice, I should say. That's all.
So at the present time, the mayor has that power?
At the present time, to make changes in departments, boards or commissions, the proposal needs to come from the mayor, the council has to approve it, it's a two thirds vote.
Correct.
The change is that there's still a two thirds vote of the entire membership. But with regard to changes and consolidations, eliminations, mergers, the council would have the ability to move for any of those things uh, on their own motion, the mayor still has the option to do it, um, but they can do it on their own motion. And keep in mind, uh, if they get the two thirds vote, the mayor can still veto it.
So it's just a, it's a kind of a flip, it's, it's flipping the power in some ways. Well, I mean, all I'm saying is just that, that the mayor can do it now, and it's based on a two thirds vote by the common council, that if, then it flips in there, in, in this way of saying it, it, it flips so that the common council has the power, the mayor can then veto.
Yeah, the mayor can veto both, I mean, he can veto his own, uh, because he may not like what the council has done, the mayor can make a proposal um, to modify or consolidate departments, uh, the council has full discretion to change that completely. Uh, and to, um, to, um, leave one of the departments out of it if they want, or at, you know, and, and they can do any number of things in that regard, uh, within the context, and the mayor still has veto authority, just because the mayor proposes something doesn't mean the council's going to approve it, uh, and the council could change it substantially, so the mayor could end up vetoing his own proposal because they changed it so much. So, it's pretty standard, I mean, it's not an unusual power, maybe an unusual in Norwalk that the council would be given authority to do this, but, uh, it's not a radical alteration, it's a change, obviously, of current procedures and customs.
Yeah, and I, I brought this up because I wanted to make sure that the commissioners all understood that this in fact is a, is a change. And when we are discussing this with, uh, potential voters that we're cognizant that we have done this, and is that our, if, it was not our intention, it was initiated by the council. And I think there's another one that's close to this too, I'm trying to find it right now, where there's an additional change. Um. Do you remember it?
I think that's a good point, Patty, because I mean, they are so sensitive to us changing.
Yeah, anything.
So, yeah, and so to the extent that it'll create more issues, I think we just need to be mindful and clarify that it's not us, this is from the council, the common council.
Exactly. I agree, yeah.
Any other comments? Tyler, Carl, Michael? Well. Um, can we finish the document and then go back to that to see if there's anything else similar to this pertinent to this decision?
Okay. So let me just make it over here. All right. More Scrivener's Corrections. Voting standard, they're using our, our defined term, no change. And see. Um. Oh, this is, uh, believe it or not, there were still gender neutrality that we caught here, Patty, I thought we caught it all. There was still. Uh.
Sometimes it just worked, yeah. It puts it back.
Angela, don't, Angela, don't be angry with me, but look at that word. Said.
I see it.
It's above, it's still.
Hold on a second, let me, let me, let me catch it, uh.
Two, two sentences above, it's right, that.
Yeah, there's a couple.
There's a bunch of seds in here, okay, sorry, guys, uh. For.
This is one clause that we moved from one place to another, which is probably why we didn't catch it.
Thank you for making excuses for me, I appreciate it.
No, I, I recall that, uh, clearly, because I've been very much involved with city sewers and streets and paid attention.
Yeah, no, this is old language, actually, this is, this is.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, these are historical powers, I think we were right, Patty, I just remembered that we did move this later.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
Yep, there we go, all right, I'll take care of those, um, changes said. Get rid of said, all right, Mad Mick. Um, four dash five, again, uh, no change, just the entire membership definition.
Well, what's that not word, what was the not that you skipped over?
Oh, not.
Oh, yeah, there it is, too.
It was a sentence, it was a sentence properly, it was other, uh, manner not, otherwise being not to be in the city, so.
Okay, okay.
Uh, whoops. Another voting standard, I think. Is it, hold on. Yeah, voting standard, this was one that was interesting on Monday night when we were talking about it, and that was, uh, they did actually come up with a couple of places where they thought they had, uh, appointment authority. And, um, in most communities, and we're not tra-, again, this will be brought up in the next two years, I imagine, um. When the council has appointment authority, usually it's the president of the council subject to a majority vote of the council to make the appointments, there are councils that appoint people to ethics boards, to audit commissions, to finance entities, to all kinds of entities, um, here the, we all assumed that the plurality standard was because every member of the council could make a nomination. And so, so if every, all sixteen members make a nomination, if two of them get together, they could win with two votes, and that's what the plurality vote is, so they, so they kept it, didn't make a change. We kept the two, didn't make a change, they didn't, um, they didn't change that, but they we spend more time on that one than just about anything else, because everybody's saying, huh? Huh, you know, so, uh, here we fixed some words. Veto, disapprove, as opposed to disapproval. Statement of objection is not a defined term, so we lowercased it. Again, another voting standard. Override of the mayor's veto, two thirds of the entire body. Uh, the entire membership, so that's again, no change except for the definition. So we didn't make a lot of changes in standards, you'll see a few at the end, but they were comfortable with most of the standards, and they had, I think they appreciated the time that they had because most councils don't have this ability, um, what's CC number nine? What do we change here?
Did you add, add action, it's not underlined?
No, I don't know what the change was here, CC number nine, consolidate. That, that must be a mistake, I don't see any change. No change, um. Because this is a referendum section, and I didn't want to mess around with the referendum section. Oh, we changed a little thing in here, acts of the assembly of the general, something called the general statutes, as we define the term. So, we made that little change. We put referendum into the opening paragraph, uh, four ten, that's what we did, um. Oh, down here, down, down. Four ten. Language, the only paragraph was four ten, there is no four ten, uh. Hold on a second, I think the reference is wrong. Give me one second here. One other quick thing, referendum maybe, and just take a quick look. This language doesn't go anywhere. Um, I think we need to, uh, why did they, it's a number nine. Consolidate into the opening provisions of four dash ten. Four dash ten. One second, I think I found it. Why is it not showing up? Referendum. Oh, the reason it's not showing up. Okay, got it. Here's the, here it is. We already had it in this paragraph. Uh, is the referendum as here and after defined, well, it's not here and after defined, I think we defined it upfront. She's. Yeah, it's defined upfront. All right, that's why the language is gone, because it's here. Uh. Uh. I think we have to take out as here and after it has defined. That that's why F is no longer there. It was redundant. Um. As defined. All right, I'll fix that. That's why the section's gone, because it was redundant with the opening paragraph. Which was already there. And so I was reluctant to make any change, but they persuaded me that we should do it. So we did it. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with that. So that's what that's all about. Sorry. I was, I couldn't find the replacement language, but it was redundant language. That's, that's what it said, uh, in the note that it was redundant, yeah, consolidate redundant language into the opening provision. That's what we did. All right, sorry. Uh, got rid of another, a couple more gender issues. And consistent language. Because this was a very ancient provision that we didn't do much to. We took out the word warning and used public notice. I I had left warning in to kind of um use the ancient language next to the new term. But they thought you've defined public notice, forget about the old language. And I I don't have a big issue.
That's good. We're moving on.
Yep, sorry, I I'm sorry about that delay. I just there's so much here, kids.
No, I mean about the language, not, not.
Yeah, oh, yeah, moving on on the language, got it.
Yeah.
Uh, remember, uh, remember the remember the definition of days, and we added some language in the definition. This is the language.
Okay.
This one I remember off the top of my head. Sorry. There's so many things in here. I apologize. Um. Okay, here we made a change, the council made a change. Um, and the mayor confirmed that he does not preside at council committee meetings. So they took it out.
Okay.
Um. Voting standard not changed. That's our defined term. I was really happy that most of our, that our defined term actually shows up a majority of the time here, so. Uh. And more edit changes. So remember Camacho change. Um. Uh, if you don't mind, I want to talk to him about this. He makes a very good point. Um, this is a section, an ancient section of the charter. Uh. Um. That says anybody who willfully hinders, resists, or abuses the mayor or refuses to unreasonably neglect to refuse, whatever, shall be fined. Not more than one hundred dollars or in prison, not more than six months or both. And he says, review this provision since it's likely legally void for vagueness. Uh, in line three of the provisions, unclear what neglects to refuse even means. Um, and I don't dispute that. Um. What I wanted to do is I wanted to talk to him and to Mario, to the corporate, to the corp council. And um, see if the corp council has any rationale for keeping it in here. Um, I had raised this multiple times in the process and didn't get any definitive response, but since the council member's now raised it, maybe they'll listen to it. So if you don't mind, um, that is item number twenty eight. I will talk to council member Camacho and the corp council about that.
I think it's wise to do so.
All right. Um, minor change in five dash five A, make it clear it's clerical staff. Uh, number twenty nine, this was a one that came from um council member Camacho, which I I did add because I thought it was a non substantive change, but just a clarification. And it was approved by the council, so I didn't feel that it was as presumptuous. He wanted to make sure that professional qualifications are tied to their applicable field.
Yeah.
So.
That, I think that, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Yep.
Anybody else? Nope, okay.
Uh. On commence with term with mayor shall appoint clerk to term. Uh. To a term. Or so shall point them in in accordance with eight dash two A. Yeah, this just takes the term out of here and refers back to or refers forward to eight dash two A one. So we'll see what that is in a few minutes. But I think it's concurrent with the mayor is what it is. And this was added by the council. Item number eleven. Clarification, the mayoral appointment authority for the city clerk and the administrative relationship of the clerk to the president of the common council. So, um.
We talked about that.
Yeah, well, this was approved by the council. Um, I don't know what the word shall is doing at the end of that sentence. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, the word shall's got to come out.
Well, maybe, is it? Is it, just, is that because there's a shall up above?
It might be, but I I don't know why it would.
Take it out.
Yeah, I'm gonna take it out. That's an easy an easy fix.
So is this the current practice that the council appoints um the assistant city clerk? Not the mayor?
Uh, I don't know. This is, that's not, let's see what this, where this language goes. No, it's, it's a recodification of current language. So yes, I guess that's the practice. The the only new stuff is the underlying stuff. The rest of it is, uh, goes back to the special acts nineteen thirteen.
Hmm.
Which makes sense, because if you look back at the old, some of the old provisions in the special act, the council had considerable power. Um. You know, remember they had those, a power to appoint certain boards and commissions. I don't know what they were. But, uh, you know.
So thi- this is a bit confusing, though, with all the discussion that the council said that they needed support help. They didn't have any. So if they have control over the assistant clerk, then.
Well, that's why they added that language, to provide administrative assistance. That's new language. That clarifies their concern that they don't have that help.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a change.
The underline is a change, but the appointment is not, yeah. Okay, moving on. I don't think there's much in six. Town clerk. We should change things here while he's not here. I'm sorry, it's a joke.
Mm hmm.
Um. Good. All right, nothing in that section. Very little in that section that we've ever dealt with. Um. Again, most of these are twenty four Y.
Yeah.
It is, um. Probably more scrivener's. Twenty four Y is delete scope of responsibility.
Why? Was that a council recommendation?
It's a repetition.
It was in, it was on their document, yeah.
Oh, a repetition.
Yeah.
Right.
So they eliminated scope of responsibility. They eliminated change presenting to regarding. I think more readability issues.
Mm hmm.
Uh, recommendation twenty four Z and twenty four A A, twenty four Z. Minor edit. I think there was some redundancy is what this was all about. Because you see the stagger in the sentence that remains.
Mm hmm.
Um. And so there was, there was some redundant language in the document. And I think that's why that was eliminated. Quorum again is defined in the beginning. We had it several places. That's why we ended up defining quorum at the beginning of the document. Uh, meeting frequency. Not less than monthly unless otherwise permitted by ordinance. The idea of that was, um, if there's no need for a monthly meeting, you know, monthly meetings, the city should make that determination by ordinance, give, absolve them of their obligation. If they don't need.
There's some commissions that only meet a couple of times a year, you know.
That's correct. Yeah, but the standard is, the the default is gotta try to meet monthly guys. But if there are commissions that don't, they should be, uh, there was a it's not a waiver, but it, but it's uh establishing an alternate standard based on what the expectations are of the commission. Um, this was clarification called clerical assistance, whether it's an actual clerk or some staff person, this uh simply changes language, not the concept.
Mm hmm.
Number thirteen.
Does the word minority in uh this one kind of go along with the reason we moved the word minority back several pages?
Different, because this actually refers to the minority representation statute.
Okay.
And he did not make the recommendation in this section. I think he did it for that reason.
Okay.
Again, as I've said, it's a misnomer. It's a horrible title for the statute, because it doesn't. Um. It's a cap on majority party representation. Um, minority parties don't need to be represented in the minority. It could be an unaffiliated voter.
Mm hmm.
The changes in thirteen were to align with seven dash one, six B six. So that's, that's, um, seven dash one. Yeah, okay, the these just align all the definitions that we have with regard to public records. That's what this does. We added political composition to make sure alternate members are taken into account where they already are. But we, um, we think the language is a little cleaner this way. There was a scrivener's correction. Voting standard on appointment to boards and commissions stays the same, but we use the defined term. Added the word city to clerk. We were trying to figure out which clerk it was. So city clerk. Yeah, uh, they deleted, uh, it was in a rata that the uh notice would go from the city clerk to the mayor and the president uh of the council. Actually, there's an extra word we got taken out of there. Let me just fix that. The clerk of the council is the city clerk. And that's what they were taking out, but I think we took out too much, uh, removal. Uh. The mayor or other appointing authority. Notice, notice. Yeah, it's president of the common council. I've got to put common council back in there. We took out too much. Okay. Much of typos. Not typos, but just erratas, commas. Number thirteen. This just aligns that there's a record keeping provision, seven dash one B six. So we don't repeat the language. We talk about the records that are set forth in seven dash one B six. Remember, we just saw that here, this. So this lays it out. And in that section I just went from refers to it. So we don't repeat it. And don't make any unnecessary mistakes in that regard. We moved these sections from article ten that dash four into the board of estimates section, no change. Because it was like in the middle of the budget process. And it didn't really align with the budget process. Um. There is a section that says that they set the mill rate in the budget section. This kind of lays out their powers. Um, and so there's no change here. It was just a move from ten dash four in article ten. That was a good pickup, actually. They added the annual report should go to the board of estimate as well as the mayor and the council. They recommend.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that is good. Uh, number fourteen. Um, it's number fourteen here. Hold on, number fourteen. See the terms. Oh, all right, th- there's no there was no conclusion. But article four, and I didn't put this in as a decision required. Um. Should the terms of the police commission, and I think this will come up again with the fire commission. Yeah. Um. Be co terminus with the mayor as it is now. We're going to be expem- we're going to be increasing the number of members. But the question was whether they should be co terminus or whether they should be um, create, the term of office should be created with the staggers like everybody else. So I don't know what everybody's thought is on this. They did, they punted it back to you. You may decide that it's something we can discuss in the next substantive debate in the next two years.
Any, any comments? Nobody? Uh, okay, I I think there's an advantage to have it staggered, so there, there is some continuity history uh, there and it's less political. My thought. Nobody else?
I'm in favor of leaving it staggered.
All right, it's, it's not staggered currently.
Oh, not currently, oh, okay.
Right, Steve?
Yeah, it's not. So the question is. Yeah, it's not. So the question is, you, if you have staggered, then it becomes a term of office. And the question is, what should the term be? When will it take effect? So the mayor would have to make all the initial appointments to create the stagger. Does anybody know what the mayor's thoughts are on this?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't.
Should I talk to Tom?
Yes, please, I think so, yes.
Right. Let me just make a note.
It, it just seems that if everybody goes out, it, it's. That, that's a pretty strong statement.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be inclined to have it staggered just because I think it's generally good to have stuff like that be staggered.
Yeah, right.
So that you're not, you know, replacing the whole. Same time, but if there's a, the precedent to not do that, I'd be curious to hear it.
Let me, well, he's not the president. He's the chief of staff, though. I'll talk to Greg.
Precedent, precedent.
Oh, precedent, precedent. Your custom, your custom is a mayoral appointed police and fire commission. Um, and I did raise this multiple times during the course of the year. Didn't seem to be a lot of inclination, but they did ask that we take a look at it. Uh, 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 and so I'll talk to Tom and the mayor. And see what their thoughts are and report back to you at the next meeting. And what I'll do is if they're inclined toward it. I'll try to develop some language because our last meeting, see some language uh on it. So we'll just go from there.
Yeah, and, and to that point, there was a lot of public comment on, on uh, the police and fire commissions. And that they have uh more accountability to the general public. So the staggered terms, I think, supports that concept. And this could be a negative, yeah, negative position for um. Voters, the electors to not approve the. Charter.
All right, um, I will bring that up with them subsections. I'm sorry. Is there another? Was I interrupting somebody? I hope not.
No.
Okay, subsection C simply um refers to this, the ordinance that allows for um. Uh, a different standard than the monthly meeting standard. I think this was just breaking down. I think I created subtitles in this section, basically, and except. Oh. They thought the, the, the last clause, council thought the last clause was. Dilatory. I don't know what the right term would be. Uh, they didn't think it was necessary. I don't disagree. But. You may want to let me see what they said here. E, e, scrivener correction. Delete bipartisan. I signed it, okay. So I think that, you know, I, I don't think that does any damage to it. Same thing as. In the premises, no one was quite sure what the hell that meant. So they eliminated it. The uh, the same question for police commission and fire commission on staggers and terms.
Yeah, yes, they would be, they, I, they, if there's a change, they should be.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be consistent. And then um, the ordinance on the. Determination of monthly or otherwise meetings is the same as the police commission. And these are just, again, um. Title heads. They asked uh that we take out the term bipartisan. Police commission because um. We have the minority party representation provision in here and that that may be. At odds with the, with the state statute.
Okay, so there, that sentence also ended action in the premises. So you took it out one place. Do you want to be consistent?
I think that's a good point. Um, just seeing here, the, the police commissions. There it is. Yeah, the sections are virtually identical, uh, which is weird. Um. I guess no one wanted to offend. It's like you dress your kids in the same outfits, so the police and fire had to look the same. I, I don't know. They didn't want to offend somebody. Uh. I think that's it on substantive changes in that section. Now we're in the departments. Just some editing in eight dash one A. We're moving, we're getting through this, guys. Uh. Whoops, uh, voting standards, again, no change. The entire membership standard. With the definition, no change on reorganization. This is some of those repeats. Um, it gets repeated a couple of times. This is where um. The mayor um sets it as in section four dash five. So it's the same voting standard. Uh, appointment. And removal, the sole discretion of the mayor, chief of staff, corp counsel, city clerk.
And so didn't you add the city clerk?
Yep, city clerk's in there.
Okay.
Document here. I think we added, here it is, director parks, recreation and parks is added to the departments.
Was there a library one or not?
Yeah, and why is that not there?
Because no one could conclude that it was, that the mayor made that appointment.
Well, I was present when he did.
I have a note here. What about the library and other department heads? No one has given me an answer on that. I, I asked about it.
We'll have to go back to Tom, Tom.
No, I have the note, but I. Because I've been raising that at your request, um.
Yeah.
Pathy.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the thing is, they have municipal historian, which is, you know, uh, doesn't have a staff. The director of the library has a staff.
But it has an ordinance that says it. That's why it's there. Uh, the library is not mentioned in the ordinances or the charter. Uh, I'm not against it. I'm all forward. Yeah. Let me, let's say we could find out. No one, no one could definitively respond. Um. No substantive changes there, but I have the note. I will take care of it. Try to reach Tom tomorrow. It's amazing. Sometimes things still. I'll fix the, I'll fix, I'll fix that uh spacing at later point. I'm not fixing it here, as you may note, because this is my red line, so.
Yeah.
Uh, just, just definitional changes. This just was, was um, if you look at, you'll see the clean version of it. It won't look as sloppy as this. It just consolidates everything into the same subset. Change the title to the right titles. There's no.
Yeah, why is generally uh underlined there?
I don't know why. Uh, it doesn't show up on my clean version. And every time I look at it, it says put a comma in there. Um, so it's just showing up on the red line.
Okay, because of the word itself, yeah.
Yeah, you'll see it, you'll see it throughout here. Uh, it, I don't, I don't, I don't understand it. Um, makes no sense. Um, maybe it reads the four thirty five as a word and there should be a comma. I don't know how. Um, that works. The title is corrected. Uh, it's not chief operating officer, it's a chief of operations and public works. Again, title fix in the section there, public safety functions. Getting there, education, not much here, I don't think. Where is some coming up here, I think. There is something coming up here. Um, and I wanted your thoughts on it. These are just minor typos. I think at the end of this section, hold on, mistaken, under budget. They had suggested, and I did not do this, because I wanted, this is one of the decision points, number seventeen. They had requested that these provisions should be thrown into article ten. Um. And I think it's already kind of in article ten. And is this new? I think this is new.
The yellow is new, right?
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to see if the, the whole um. I don't have my footnotes here. The whole.
Yeah, was one of the things the board of ed objected to and said the mayor, you know, the mayor gets everything.
Yeah, no, then we fixed, yeah, but, but this language, they, they ultimately agreed to this language. This was not, we got rid of, it was the next one. Nine dash four is the one they objected to and we fixed it. Um, this one they can't object to. They may want to, but they can't. Um, so the question I have for you is, do you want me to see, the reason I put these into board of ed sections? Um, and again, they didn't object and, and the council didn't even object. They just thought, is this redundant? Or should it be in article ten? The reason it's here is it's here to make it loud and clear that the board of ed. Has a, the board of ed has its own chapter. No other department has its own chapter. And it's to make it loud and clear that they have these budgetary responsibilities. Um, so.
Um, I like loud, I like loud and clear.
Good.
Not anybody else.
I.
Angela, you're laughing.
Yes.
No, I'm.
I know you do. I think that with the board of that, it should be put, put in both places.
It's in both places.
And underlined, right.
All right, leave. Excellent. I, I don't like to advocate, but I think that's a great decision. I will point out for the record. Um, all right. Good, easy. Uh. I will get clarity. On the five-year program, how that works. I'll talk to, I'll talk to um. I, I actually talked to him today. I'm really sorry. I didn't have, you'll see that in a minute. It comes up. Uh, we moved the budget calendar to three instead of four. That was actually me, I think. I think I made that scrivener's change. It just made more sense uh because it came first. But we made the term estimates instead of process. Uh, we took out, including the board of ed, or they're recommending we take it out. Because it's such defined and budgeted entity, and I didn't fight them too hard on it, um, because it is. So uh. Um, so we don't repeat the board of ed.
Who, who are they? The board of bed or the council?
The council, the council, members of the council.
Wow, wow.
If you want to reject it, that's your call. You have a right to reject it. I'm not encouraging you one way or the other. I'm just saying.
We, you know, I'm just reminding everybody that we discussed this at length, the importance of making it very clear. That the board of ed was a department. So.
Let me read the definition of budgeted entity, because it's pretty clear there too. So I mean, that's why. I said to the council, we like loud and clear. I, I, I didn't know you were gonna say the same thing a couple of weeks later. But uh, budgeted entity means each division, department. Including the Norwalk Public Schools under the auspices of the Board of Education. So that language is in the definition. Um, and I think that uh, their feeling was since it was, do we need to rub anybody's nose in that? And, and, and um, if I had a vote, I would tell you my opinion, but I don't have a vote. That wants to say.
Well, it's always an issue that comes up, and I'm, I'm surprised that they are uh going light on this issue. Lighter than I would have expected. Let me just put it that.
You could put the language back in. They have the option, the last say on it if they want to take it out. So I just tell you how.
Okay, what do you think commissioners? In or out?
Uh, and so if they've removed it and they have the final say.
Yeah.
What's, what's, what's the point of putting it back in if they'll, if they'll take it back out?
Yeah, well, we don't know that they will.
We don't know that they will. It's a gamble. We can roll the dice. I, I don't.
Yeah, that's, that's all, that's all. Because what you'll probably do, if you go before them and they ask for your testimony, why did you put this back in? You may persuade them why it should be back in. That's, that's why you put it back in.
That there was a lot of discussion on the confusion of whether it, all of these requirements pertain to the board of education. That's, we had a lot of discussion on that.
But if they are included under budgeted entity. Is that, can that be made louder? Or clearer?
I could put it in bold.
Caps, caps.
I, we could have like flashing letters. I don't know what else I could do. The language, the language is clear. Um, the language is clear in the definition of budgeted entity.
Yeah, but I think for the avoidance of any doubt, we really wanted to make sure that the board of education. Phrase was there. And so I vote to keep it in. If they take it out, then that's a whole other thing.
What's everybody's pleasure here?
Okay, Michael. In or out?
Out.
Out. Okay, Venita, in. Tyler.
Say out.
Carl.
In.
Angela. In. Patsy in.
So it sounds like.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll leave the language in. Wow, a divided commission.
It's the most divided.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, my God, you know, we've been working so nicely together, kids. It's uh, no, that's.
And, but the thing is, it was, it took up a lot of our time and it was a big concern. Yeah, I, I know you were, but, but the reason for my. Making us really make a firm decision here is that we, it, it was of concern to many people.
Um. You're looking at a guy, your lawyer was involved in the uh, city of New Haven versus the city of New Haven, the New Haven Board of Education. Which established some very clear budgetary priorities uh that uh, school system still are not happy with me about. So uh, I. I, if I had a vote, you know where I'd be. Um, the next sections came out. Remember, we saw these sections in the board of estimate? Because they were kind of dangling here, and so we moved it to the board of estimate. That's why they're deleted.
Okay.
They're not gone. They're just in the board of estimate section. Um. We made it clear here in the language. Oh, here's another vote. No change. It's the, the entire membership standard is there. Um, they made it clear that uh. The uh. Maximum is basically an amendment to the mayor's proposed operating budget. They wanted to have that very clear. The mayor makes a budget proposal. They amend it um by establishing a maximum limit uh is an amendment to the mayor's budget. So that was just a clarity procedure. No change here. There are a couple of ones we did make changes. I'm, I think they come a little later. Um, here's one. I knew there was one in the, in the budget section. So this is special appropriations. And the current standard was an affirmative vote of two thirds of the entire membership. And they decided that why should the standard be higher? Than their approval standard uh for budget items, and they decided to go with the majority vote standard, the defined term.
Hmm, okay.
That's.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yep, that, that's again, the committee of the council. It wasn't the full council, but, and the same thing is true on special appropriations. So that's the reason. For that. Here's a substantive issue. Um. This is item number eighteen. And then in the course of my conversation with um. Henry today, and I'm so sorry, I did not. Talk to Henry about this other item. Um. What, uh, Nora had recommended. In the second paragraph, right here. This paragraph, she wanted to take these, this thirty day timeframe for appropriations remain on the books. Um, for. You know, uh, to the credit for the specific purposes for which are made for thirty days after expiration. you know, to the credit for the specific purposes for which are made for thirty days after expiration. She wanted to move it to ninety. Henry vehemently, and we all, they all understood that I'd be talking to Henry, was opposed to it. He wants to keep thirty. He says they have up to sixty. But he said, that's just government accounting standards, sixty. So you can't go to ninety under any circumstance. And he was reluctant to advise that we go beyond thirty. So I just want to report that to you. Is that is an action item that you need to take? Because the council specifically requested that you look at the ninety-day standard.
And, and it's currently thirty?
It is currently thirty. Henry recommends that you keep it at thirty.
Any comments?
I would stay at thirty.
Anybody else?
Stay at thirty? Just, and they haven't, what, up until sixty days?
Well, technically, yes, but the charter requires thirty. And so they will do it within thirty. The government accounting practices allows sixty. I asked Henry, you have a problem? We went to the sixty. He says, I have everybody working under the thirty. I don't want to change it. That was.
What, and I'm sorry, what, what is the argument to go to ninety?
I don't know what, I don't know what the argument was. They thought, shit, I think they were, look, sixty days. If you, if you follow, and, and, and you'll know this, Tyler. As a municipal guy for many, many years. Most people know that the books don't close until the end of August. That's sixty days, guys, roughly sixty days. I don't know where the ninety days comes from, which.
Well, it's, it's interesting that you mentioned that's the HUD, the HUD reporting is, well, so the reporting is ninety, right? After the close of your fiscal year, you have ninety days to, to report on what you did during the prior fiscal year. But I think the window for billing things back to the prior year is only thirty. So the fiscal part of it is thirty, the reporting part of it is ninety.
That's correct. And, and this is, but this is not for HUD. This is.
I know, this is different. I'm just, I'm just.
But it's a similar standard. It's a similar concept. Yeah. Yes. I don't know where the ninety, I don't know where Nora got the ninety from, but Henry was vehemently against it. So I, I think you should probably stick with the thirty. But while I'm saying this, take a look just above in the current document. And I made the change only to remind myself that this was requested. And I, and I really have to think about whether it's appropriate. But since the section was invoked and we were talking the thirty, ninety, sixty, Henry thinks that the standard on expenditures should be thirty days as well. It's currently in the Charter at ninety, and maybe that's where Nora got the ninety. Henry says, we don't do that. We get it done in thirty. And now, as I've said to everybody, as I've said to everybody, we can't create anything new here. And the issue is, in light of the fact that the council brought up the shift in the the second sentence, the thirty to ninety shift, probably based on the ninety-day provision in the current Charter. Is it a scribblers correction? If you see my, my vague note here. Do we change this as a, it wouldn't be a scribblers correction. You'd be making the change based on the request of the council and determining that the custom has been thirty and keep both dates at thirty. So Henry says he does thirty anyhow. Ninety doesn't mean he has to do ninety. And if he does, so from my perspective, if we left it at thirty, at ninety, it's not the end of the world. It's pushing it a little bit from my perspective. But I wanted, I wanted to say publicly, you know, on the record, I wanted to give you, you know, some food for thought. It'd be nice to do him the favor, but I did remind Henry, these are the sections that he abandoned us on. When, when, remember he left after we went. And I said, we didn't get to this, Henry, because we didn't have Henry to work with. So leaving ninety doesn't change his practice. It doesn't mandate that he does ninety, but somebody can say, hey, it says ninety, I want ninety. And Henry could say, do you like your job? I think is the response. You know? I'm getting slapped.
And in, in the process, the, the thirty days really puts pressure on department heads to get all of their expenses accounted for. And I've, you know, in past experience with department heads, I know some don't for, for their own reasons. And so the thirty days really is tight and it puts pressure on them.
Yeah, but, but I'm not arguing the policy. The question is, we were requested to make the change in the second portion, and you're arguing in favor of keeping the thirty. What do I do about Henry's request to move the ninety to thirty, which was not part of the council request? I thought I, I could push the concept of a scribblers correction based on custom and based on practice that we've caught before the Charter goes away. But it's pushing it a little bit, so.
Well, I would only say that if Henry's practice is thirty.
Yep.
I think I understand why he wants to do that. And I would, I would change it from ninety to thirty. That would be my opinion.
Yeah, mine too.
Right. And the worst case scenario, when we go before the council is I'll explain the concerns. I'll explain why it happened. I'll explain why we didn't expand it in the other place. But by looking at that number, the CFO made a determination that, whoa, that's not what we do. And I think that in light of the fact that it's in this section, arguably it is appropriate jurisdiction. However, the council could just leave it at ninety. So they'll make that final determination if you go to, if you go to thirty.
Okay.
All right. I, I'm sorry to take time explaining that, but that's what that was all about. So you will leave it at thirty, but we're going to move the other ninety to thirty.
Correct.
In first sentence. Okay, got it. Again, ten dash eleven, I'll talk to Henry about.
Yeah, so, so here, here is, they, they have changed the language we had. And I, I remember I mentioned the word proposed was in our, in our statement. Because it's not, it's not officially approved. It's, it's the projection which needs to be re-discussed at the, at the following year. Hearings.
Yep.
So they, they changed it.
Yeah. Well, I'll talk to, that, well, that's their prerogative. They're asking us to change.
I know.
Yeah, let me talk to Henry about how it works.
Yep.
And that'll be, now here's something that's interesting. Either maybe I missed it. But here we left this in, so I don't have to take it out now. I'll leave it in. You see that?
Yep.
So there it is.
While we're on this, remember we added the requirement for for the Board of Estimate to have a, a general public hearing on the capital budget.
Yeah, that's. Yeah.
Is it still there?
Yeah, it hasn't been changed.
Okay.
That's why you didn't see it tonight. Wasn't changed.
Okay.
Again, all this is the capital budget stuff. I'll get clarity from Henry on that. We're almost there. It's at the end here. I'm just seeing. Defined term, capitalized capital budget item, which is a defined term. Voting standard did not change. Wait, one second here, one second. Give me one second. All right, let me see, this is a ten dash sixteen C.
Yeah, you changed it from present and voting to entire membership.
An affirmative vote of two thirds of the council present and voting. My note is wrong. The language is correct. No change. They left that one exactly the way it is. I was looking at my notes from the meeting. Yeah, so my notes are, they left it exactly as is. It's the P O C D. This is subsection C sixteen, ten dash sixteen C, yes. Two thirds of the, so it's not a, it is not the entire membership's two thirds of the council present and voting. I don't know why they did that. They kept it the way it is. No change. Majority vote of the council remain the same. Change here they V two. Oh. This is supposed to be majority vote. This is supposed to be a majority vote. Okay. My God, I don't really get that. It's my last one. Now that's supposed to be, they're changing that one to majority vote. Twenty-two B, which is ten dash seventeen B. Damn. Yeah, I, I, the note is correct. So it's a majority vote of the council. That was their recommendation. I apologize. I'm glad we did this, this way. I would have caught it at some point, but this is good. All right. Forty-four Q Q, why is this here? Take a quick look. A lot of stuff here, folks.
Oh, and C there, the word lapsed. How do you define lapsed? You know, I mean, many of these projects get extended for, for reasons, construction reasons.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
This is not new language. Why is this underscored? Why?
Well, our lapse is no, isn't it?
It's not clear. Why is it? Yeah, must be. Twenty-four Q Q. Twenty-four Q Q. Restructure and realign the provisions as shown. It's just a restructuring. I'll tell you, I don't remember where that came from, why that came that way. And let me just take a look at footnote number five thirty-one, excuse me. Oh, these came from the ordinances. That's where these came from. These came from the ordinances. And they made that change lapse. I, I don't remember why they asked for that. I'm sorry. I could find out.
Yeah. That's open to interpretation if something's lapsed or not lapsed, you know.
All right, I'll talk to Nora about that. I think it was Nora. I think that's pretty much, we're pretty close to the end here. We eliminated a lot of this language. They thought it was, whoops. Unnecessary. There was a lot of language from the ordinance that they didn't think needed to be in the Charter, like the role of the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that they recommend that we eliminate that language. And the borrowing provisions. Matt Ritter.
But, but, but the language that they want to, is that articulated somewhere else clearly? This ability of the public to.
It's either going to be in their ordinance or it's not going to be in here. It's not going to be the role of the chair. They didn't think should be in the Charter. That should be done by the planning board. Or the ordinances should deal with that. We already have provisions in the Charter regarding the conduct of meetings, which addresses some of these issues. But it's not specific to the planning, the, the capital budget process.
Yeah, yeah.
And they just thought of that.
But that, that process with the public is from time to time a major concern of their ability to articulate their concerns.
Yeah, but we established a pretty clear public hearing. If you say here, I mean, we, we do have pretty clear standards on how public hearings are supposed to operate. And I think they thought that was just getting, digging, digging down too deep into the day-to-day operations of the Planning Commission. Planning and zoning board or whatever it's called. And your call. You, if you want to put it back in, that's.
Any other comments? Tyler, do you have any thoughts on that? No. Carl, nobody? Now, this is one.
I said, the only thing I would ask Steve, when they talked about, did is the reason they wanted it? Did they give you a reason? Has there been a problem?
I guess I recall, I could check that out if you want. I will ask, why delete?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be curious to note for that and for the, for the ninety-day thing, if there was a specific reason why.
I, I have a ninety-day on my list. Ninety days is on my list. No questions on borrowing.
It's always good to be able to have the public involved a little bit more than less sometimes.
And, and that's what the public has been asking for.
And that is exactly what they've been asking for all the time, so.
Well, here's what I would say to you guys. They've asked us to delete this. That gives us the flexibility to write something a little different. And so I think those of you who are interested in, I'll ask them why they want it out. But I, those of you who, and I, I, I'm with you on this. If I had a vote, I'd be with you on this one. See what portions of this thing you think are important. You, you, in one of my charters, I don't think it was Norwalk, it might have been Stanford. They said there shall be a public hearing, but that doesn't guarantee that any members, members of the public will be allowed to speak. How on earth is that a public hearing?
Yeah.
You know, that's not in the current, it's not in our draft of the Charter in Stanford.
But one, one of our goals was to create as much transparency as we can, as we could. And so this goes to the core of that charge.
So my suggestion is, I don't know, Benita, is this something, do you want to take a look at this and see if you want to put some concepts together? If you want to lay out some concepts and run them by me and I'll run them by everybody. We'll try to draft some language. You have that option. It's not a function. It's, at this moment, you still have the ability, in the context of what they've asked, they said they don't want to have it in here because they don't think it's necessary. You have the option to come up with new language. What they don't have the option to do when we send it to them is to modify our language. They, if they don't like what we say, they can reject it. What my hope would be that before, between now and next Wednesday, when we meet, we'll have a time to socialize whatever we come up with. So if you want to lay down some concepts, even if they're just an outline of concepts, Benita, I'm not asking you to take on my work. You know, and I'm asking Benita because she's, she's been very vocal on this. I'll be happy to try to develop a two or three sentences to define what we think they need to do minimally. Not the role of the chair, but the role of the body. And their relationship with the public. So I think we can do that based on where we are in the process. So if you want to do that and get something over to me, I'll work on it over the weekend. If you get it in tomorrow or even Saturday.
Do you recall a single source contact that might have talked to you about this? Or was it several members at once or just one person?
I don't remember where this came from. This was a, hold on. What's the number? Number nineteen, hold on. Got it already. It's a mistake. Nineteen. It just says eliminate the role of the chair. I don't, so it's something that came in earlier in the process. It could have been Nora, it could have been Nora, it could have been Councilmember Smith. Had a few things in there, and council member, there's another member of the council had some ideas. But it was in early enough and it was accepted, so uh I don't remember if there was, how much debate there was, if any. But it was one of those concepts, uh we asked them to get their lists in, and if there was no controversy, there was no debate, Carl.
If I had to guess, I would go to Nora first.
So uh let's uh, so you're gonna check it out and get back to us on that.
I will talk, and if Benita wants to get me some uh some.
Are you willing to do that, Benita?
I can try to do that, I've got memorial, a funeral to go to tomorrow, so we'll see.
Sorry.
Are you going to the Stanford funeral, or for the?
For the minister.
Yeah.
Her, his wife is one of my rug hooking students, so.
Oh my goodness, what, you know, I'm working in Stanford, so that's that's just been uh. Prevating everybody, it's just been a horrible, what a horrible story.
Yeah, it really is, he was, they they are wonderful people, they were, he was great, and she's wonderful too. Sits on the commission, the police commission.
She's on the police commission of how ironic that is.
Yeah.
Um you know, so it's a very sad story, I'm sorry, so if you can do it.
So I'll try to try to get that done, but I just, I took a picture of it, because I'm not gonna get this up on my computer again.
All right, yeah, it it does have to be tomorrow, if you get it on Saturday or Sunday, even I, you know, I'm, you know, whatever, I'll be happy to do it. And I will try to talk to people tomorrow, I've got a lot of Stanford related stuff on the early side of the day, and then the rest of it is uh. Nothing changed, but here's the uh. The Janu- oh, January one is something that came out of these discussions, that it was to be effective upon the. Uh adoption by the voters of Norwalk, so it could have been November, um and they had recommended January one. Unless otherwise set forth in the charter, there's some things that won't be effective, well, the mayor for your term is no longer here. But things like the transition office, it has a specific uh date where it will be effective. Um so January one is what they recommended.
So Steve, just so I'm clear, the the four year term is gone completely, not to be added in as a separate option to vote on.
You just voted, you just voted.
We did, we did as far as taking it out of here, but my understanding always was is that. It might, and even from councils, that it might still go before the voters, but not as part of the charter.
If you take it out.
Uh huh.
They can't put it back in.
Or have it as a separate item to vote on.
Well, it can't be an item to vote on if it's not in the final report. Let me explain that, uh this is your final report, you're presenting a final report to the council.
Correct.
They can vote up or down on the whole thing, or they could vote up on parts of it and down on parts of it. Or they, you know, whatever, they can't add anything to it, so if the four year term is not part of your final report. They can't put a question on the ballot that's not in the report.
Gotcha.
That's, that's the answer.
Okay, so the logic on January first uh seems arbitrary.
Yeah, it gives you a little time, and so it doesn't take effect immediately. Um it it gives, you know, everybody a couple months to um to start altering the approach that they take to things. I mean, it seems to me that the budget process, um um some of the things in the budget process will have been passed already. Like, for example, the early hearing probably will not take effect this year, because this is gonna be, even if we did November. Uh the early here, unless we did a transition provision saying that, but they're already into the budget process at that point, so. Um so the budget process will take over on January one, uh there's no, it's kind of seamless, so it shouldn't pose any problems in that regard. Um there are no changes, no changes, I uh in. I don't think I made any, there are no changes that the council made in this section at all, this is, you know, the um. The um taxing, yeah, so so that's the end of, that's the end of presentation.
Okay, and by the way, while we're on the taxing districts, I have uh contacted uh all four, first, second, third, and sixth. Uh taxing district commissioners to schedule uh an opportunity for us to. Appear before their September meeting to answer any of their questions or concerns, or to. Uh explain what we've done, so I, when I have the specific times, I'll get schedule out. And hopefully some of you would be able to go with me, um because I think it'll be very helpful to get this document passed.
I agree.
They've all agreed, they've all agreed, so.
That's wonderful. And they should start thinking, I would say to them, they need to start thinking about, if this passes, they should start thinking about. What's gonna happen in the next two years, and they really starts, they really should start looking at their documents, so that they can give the next commission. Their guidance on it, they, you know, they should really be uh. So that's it, that's it. Yeah.
Can I make a motion for a German?
Sure, we're on for next Wednesday, right?
At uh Wednesday. Thirty, thirty, six thirty.
Sorry, Carl, go ahead.
I was just gonna say a Zoom meeting? Or do you want us in person?
I have to be, I'm still at the vineyard, so I will be on Zoom.
I will just talk off to you then.
Okay.
Camera, Carl.
Gassy will send her private jet, her private jet to pick us up and we'll.
So on the night. One, if I had one, I would.
On the night at six thirty, is that correct?
Next Wednesday at six thirty, and that'll be our last meeting, I will try to get the document into uh well before then. Um and uh and Angela, keep 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 your eyes peeled.
Yes, absolutely, thanks, Guy.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, bye, guys.